It's 7:00 o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a routine and justice for all.
All board members are in attendance this evening. Before we move forward with a motion to approve the agenda, does anyone have any announcements tonight? That being said, we're not. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for this evening?
Make a motion.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor. It's approved. All right. In our packets, we have two minutes that we need to approve. The meeting minutes from the public and executive session on July 13th, as well as the public and executive session meeting minutes from our meeting on July 27th. Are there any questions, comments? Could I get a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Curious. All right. Noted in the agenda are five items of correspondence that the board received directly. Two of those items were emails related to concerns over programming changes at Clarence High School, specifically the changes to the math program. Two emails contained reopening questions of varying quantities, and they also thanked district administration on the reopening efforts to date. And then a third general email was a thank you for the reopening efforts from the district administrators and staff. Going forward, that brings us to the first public comment session of this evening, first of two. Does anybody has anything they'd like to say at this time? Microphones are yours. Okay. Again, there will be a second one later on. We have no unfinished business that I'm aware of. Dr. Hicks, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuchs. We're going to provide another reopening update for the board. This is the fourth one. Three have been in public and there's video recorded of them on the website. One was during the retreat for the board event. So I've only put in newer stuff that you haven't seen before because we're starting to get into the minutia of the actual minute-by-minute planning that needs to occur. And we're going to be ready. Our teachers are in next week. Kristin and her team and the other central office administrators and our building administrators have done an absolutely terrific job. So, in terms of getting our teachers involved, we had three teacher meetings to gather feedback. The first was on July 14th, another large one on the 27th, and then probably the biggest one we had last week on August 17th. They're all, they were all live streamed. There are question-and-answer documents and video for each one of the meetings on the website. We responded to well over 300 questions, probably closer to 600 questions. Those questions are in a frequently asked questions document that's attached to the presentations. We had over 700 teachers participate in the meetings. I mean, honestly, each one of the meetings had over 700 people, and then the last two were probably 300 and 250 people. We, feedback was shared, the changes have been implemented, and we'll just compliment the Teachers Association. They've done a great job partnering with us, having open communication with us. We have a couple things we need to work out, but we're ready to rock and roll. As far as parents, we held our first parent meeting before even any of the guidance came out. We knew we were having to make a plan. We had already drafted a plan based on other states' plans at that point, and we provided parents with that on July 16th. On July 30th, and then three times last week, the 18th, 19th, and 20th, we did YouTube live streams. We answered questions, many questions, over 700 of them in writing. We also responded to the questions live. Those recordings are available online as well, and all told, you know, over 2,000 parents in those particular meetings participated. One good piece of news, and I want to thank Rick for his hard work on this. A problem in the K-5 hybrid model that we chose is childcare. People are having difficulty finding AM PM childcare options. Rick worked with the YMCA. The option is now available. It was going to be at the United Methodist Church across the street from the middle school, but it's going to start off at their independent health branch near ECC. So they may, they may even have satellite locations. Is that right, Rick?
Correct.
So this could be literally a couple hundred families that could take advantage. But we'll, we've had large interest. What would you say to this point, Rick, the interest in this?
I get tons of emails every day about it. I'm sure a lot of people are going to take us up on it.
So when we get the AM PM, we will pick them up in the morning and bring them from the daycare center. We'll deliver them halfway through. We'll pick them up halfway through. We'll deliver them back again if they're, if they're in an after-school program. So no matter where the final location is, or no matter where the satellites are, we will pick up from all four elementary schools to make it easier for parents. So this was a big thing. We needed to get it done. It is done. Hopefully, we can have a bunch of parents take care of it, and they can do so in a timeframe that they can make a logical decision about what they'd like with their kids. Some other things that we've researched and had conversations with the Department of Health on. Masks are our biggest strategy for mitigating risk. We have masks, we have distancing of six feet, in some instances, 12 feet, and we have polycarbonate dividers. The one strategy that works the best in repressing the transmission of the COVID virus is masks. So we had a conversation with Gail Burstein from the Department of Health. There are masks that work, and there are masks that don't work, and there are actually some masks that are worse than wearing no mask at all. So there's our list of ones that work. The N95, the KN95, surgical masks, polypropylene or cotton masks, what's called an apron mask, pleated, like the ones we have on here, or the Olsen style, which has nice fancy curves, like Mr. Fuchs's mask has on it. These are the ones that are absolutely not acceptable. Gators, which is the kind of thing that goes around a student's neck and pulls up. Those were, in the studies that were done, the worst masks that did not have effectiveness. Bandanas won't work, and fleece masks won't work. So we're going to let the kids know that they can't wear these, but we will provide them with a mask, and we will also have disposable masks at the ready. So we have a letter going out to parents later this week that describes the whole mask situation, what's acceptable, what isn't, and we're asking if they can help us with the transition for their kids. We know it's going to be uncomfortable because we've been wearing them every day for the past four or five months, but when you get used to it, hopefully, everything will work out. We will have mask breaks. These are still subject to a little bit of change, but as it stands right now in the high school level, five minutes every period. They don't have to be consecutive. The teachers could give them a couple-minute mask break, keep doing instruction. Halfway through or towards the end of the period, give them another mask break. We just don't want it to exceed five minutes in total.
Jeff?
Yes?
We're going to let the teachers stagger that among the kids in the classroom? Are they going to let all the kids take their masks off at one time?
Right.
I mean, just thinking about everyone taking their masks off at the same time.
Yeah. It's, we're going to leave it to the discretion of the teachers at this point, although we might make it. We're talking about it tomorrow in our administrative meeting.
But they're still behind the polycarbonate.
They're still behind. So in a classroom setting, they're still behind the dividers and six feet. So it wouldn't necessarily be wrong to have half the kids take the mask off and half the kids not, or a third of the kids, or to give breaks like that. We're talking through it, and what the teachers don't want to do is interrupt the flow of the instruction. So, you know, we have to make sure that that occurs as well. But we don't have it 100% yet, James. It could end up being that we're doing like half a class or a third of a class. Could end up everybody takes their mask off at once. Obviously, if everyone takes their mask off at once, then the risk level goes up with the aerosolization, if that's the correct word, Dr. Lynch, I don't know, of the whole virus itself. So we're going to, we're going to figure that one out. We're going to do it by building. At the elementary level, five minutes in one-hour intervals. They're only there for half a day. There's not many breaks. If we need to rethink mask breaks after a week or two, we will do that, and we'll gather some data and do the right thing.
Jeff, I would just caution against everyone taking their masks off at the same time.
Okay. So there we go. We'll bring that up tomorrow when we talk with the administrators. This one's brand new. The governor came out at 11:30 and talked about it. It's a little surprising, actually, but good news for athletic kids. The governor is allowing low-risk sports, and these are his examples. Tennis, soccer, cross-country, field hockey, and swimming in all regions to practice and play beginning September 21st. Now, this presents its own set of issues for us, and our athletic director has worked out some of the protocols. It's going to have to work out more. There are some sports on here that aren't on here yet, like volleyball. I don't know if the governor knew what sports are in what season, but those sports are all in the fall season. It's either girls or boys. Like, it's girls swimming in the fall, and I believe it's girls tennis in the fall. Is it? I can't remember. But those other ones, soccer, cross-country, and field hockey, they're all this season's sports. Wrestling is not a sport in the fall season. Ice hockey is not a sport in the fall season. The governor differentiated those sports plus football and said he would allow practice, but not games, starting September 21st. So if there's no games, I don't know how motivated the kids will be. We'll have to talk it through. We're going to get some advice from our athletic director. The group that needs to weigh in is the New York State Public High School Athletic Association. They create the rules for athletic competition. So we'll see from them, and then we'll have to put in some safety measures, and we'll allow the kids to participate in sports if that's the way it turns out at a state level. As of this morning, and again, we have until tomorrow afternoon for our, well, actually, it's Wednesday, Wednesday afternoon. We have until Wednesday afternoon to allow our parents to make their final choices. These were the numbers on the kids whose parents have signed them up for 100% remote instruction. So we were at about 591. That's pretty close to where we were, where we were the last time we did this. It's a tiny bit higher. We were at about 14, 13, 14% last time. This is about 15%. Might go up a little bit more by the time Wednesday comes. But now that we've settled on a hybrid, we've explained it, we've talked through what the 100% remote instructional model would look like, it's fair to give parents another opportunity to opt into this particular model. So this is where we stand right now. You can see between the four elementary buildings by grade level where we're at. At this point, we think we're going to need approximately 11 and 1/2 full-time, 100% remote teachers at the elementary level. So we were at about nine before. We're a couple higher than that now. This is still subject to some change, and remember, we're going to take kids from all four elementary schools to create a section if it's not large enough. So right now, the class sections at the elementary level are hovering in the 10 to 11 kid range, whether they're 100% remote or whether they're the hybrid kids. So those are very small sections and should allow for a lot of interaction between teachers and kids as we move into the hybrid model, starting a couple of weeks from now.
Jeff?
Yes?
How many, how many responses are we waiting for, for this 591? How many people are we still waiting for to respond?
We don't know, because it's, the only way you're responding is if you want the program.
Oh.
Right. So we, this is pretty close, James, to what it was the last time we did it. Last time, it was just a guess, and people could opt in, and they didn't know all the facts. This time, it's a for-sure thing.
Confirmation.
That's still about 10%?
This is about 15% right now. About 600 out of 4100 kids, about, about 15%. So that's where everything stands. We'll give you, in the Friday update, we'll talk with you about where things are. We will have to make assignments for those 100% remote teachers. There may be some people who have to go through the ADA process that need accommodation, that are unable to teach in school with kids. And if those people became remote teachers and everything fit, we would try to work that out. So you'll also see today, we had some late retirements. Some teachers made up their minds that it was just too risky, and they wanted to make sure that they retired before the school year began. For us, we say good luck. They've done great work for us, and we will try to fill those positions as quickly as possible, and we should be able to get many of them filled even before the kids start back in school with full time. Okay? So any questions on where we're at with this whole thing at this point, Mr. Fuchs? Any of the board members?
What questions do the board members have? Any?
I'm sorry, I missed that.
I was just asking who had questions. I'm good. I'll take the opportunity to ask a couple, just to clarify, in no particular order. So you mentioned upcoming deadlines. The 100% remote option is Wednesday.
26.
Is there any other deadlines that parents need to be aware of?
No. If you don't sign up for the 100% remote option, you're automatically enrolled in the hybrid option. The high school and middle school schedules were available on Power School today. They're still not 100%, so expect a couple of changes here and there. The elementary class assignments, Kristin, when are they out?
They will be out by the end of this week.
End of this week, you'll get your elementary teacher assignment.
They will be mailed out the end of this week.
Oh, they'll be mailed out at the end, or so, weekend, or if you live where I do, two more days after that.
That is correct.
Depending on the speed of the postal service.
That's correct.
Okay. Just again, a couple other clarifying items. Previously, I believe you mentioned if somebody did elect 100% remote, now that athletics may be an option, they still can participate.
Right. So that's what we have from the Public High School Athletic Association, that you're a bona fide student if you're 100% remote, and if we even brought back things like the musical, you would have the option to be able to be in those extracurricular, co-curricular activities.
Okay. With regards to the Y program, again, nice job proactively working with them to get this arranged. I guess the question I, I have, well, two questions. One, given it was going to be across from the middle school, a satellite location, if you will, now it's at their main campus, is it only for Clarence students, or are other districts participating in this?
At their main campus, they have other students also, from other districts.
And do we know if our students are going to be segregated or cohorted out?
No, I don't know that yet.
Okay. And then I guess the other question, I saw, and maybe it's because we've already gotten feedback out to our community, but I saw some other districts posting a survey that seemed like it was a canned, multi-district Western New York survey, trying to understand need, to see what programs districts would have to offer. Is that something that we participated in?
No, we did not.
Okay.
Mike, are you referring to the Erie One BOSI's?
Correct.
I think it's on the website. Didn't you post it?
I missed that one, Donna.
The Erie One BOSI's survey Mike's referencing.
Erie One BOSI's had parent meetings. The survey that they put out had to do with the network, the Western New York Childcare Network, and we, they asked us to plug it into our website, and we did. It was, most of the schools in the BOSI's have done it because they're trying to figure out the same thing Rick has, which is, can they have providers in the other districts with open slots? We're taken care of through the Y program, but other districts, we put up the survey just so that they could get information if you lived in the town of Clarence.
Thank you. So as far as reopening, I know you touched on this previously, but just to clarify, as we go into September, early September, the hot days, windows can be open. We're increasing airflow. We are not using fans, we are not allowed to use fans?
No. DOH will not allow us to use fans. But opening the windows, opening doors, putting vents within the doors, those kind of things. We'll also have like an air purification. What are those things called again, Rick, for the classrooms without windows?
We have some, you know, standalone air purifiers for a cluster of classrooms that don't have outside access.
Some of our science classrooms in the high school here have transom windows. They don't open and close, so they're kind of locked in. And there's a couple of special ed rooms that are locked, you know, they don't have windows.
And I guess the last question I'd have from Mrs. Overhold, maybe if you could just touch on briefly, just to give the community a sense, you know, we went through a lot since March, remote learning, adaption. We went through a few months of that. Now we're preparing for return. We got hybrid, we got 100% remote. Can you just talk about what has been done at the district level to prepare the staff for a multitude of delivery mechanisms?
Sure, absolutely. So we conducted a professional development needs assessment survey for all of our teachers during the closure, and we really looked at that data very closely. We established an extensive staff development plan over the summer. To date, we've had thousands of approvals for courses that teachers have taken over the summer. Along with that, for next week, opening days with teachers, we will be offering over 70 offerings on September 2nd in our mini-conference, and those will touch upon health and wellness, mental health, social-emotional learning, remote instruction, technology integration, as well as social-emotional learning.
Thank you.
That concludes, as I said, a superdose before, thank you, Mr. Fuchs.
Now that my questions are done. Mr. Mancuso, I turn it over to you for finances.
Sure. A couple of things. We'll start off with the external audit. It was done in a little different fashion this year. Instead of having many auditors on site for many days, there was a couple of them there just for a couple of days. We've been uploading things to a portal, a secure portal, for them to look at, and we've been going back and forth with questions. We still anticipate it being ready for the audit committee and for the September board meeting. I'll certainly let everybody know if that gets delayed at all. The schedule of bills, I did want to bring with me, the biggest bill that we've had, this was going to be ready for your board packet. However, at the last minute, Stolen Environmental, who we bought the polycarbonate petitions from, said that they will deliver the final delivery last Friday, and if they could pick up a check, they would give us an unanticipated 2% discount. So that discount is over $18,000, so naturally, we took it. So this check would just be added to the checklist. It was funded appropriately by the district treasurer and audited by your claims auditors. Should I go on to the next? Sure. The next one is a pretty standard item we do every year at this time. It's our free and reduced lunch policy participation. So we need to reauthorize the program every year so that our free and reduced students can receive free and reduced meals. New York State also, again, this year, is covering the 25 cents for the reduced meal. So if you qualify for free or reduced, it will be free again this year. Kind of lost in everything that we've done this summer is the taxes. So, you know, we have the tax rate here for your approval tonight. You know, in our newsletter, we try to be conservative, and last year, we estimated that the average tax rate would be about $14.18 at the most. It came in at only $13.88. We remain, if not the lowest, one of the very lowest in all of the Western New York area for that. Equalization rates, you may notice from the backup sheet, have changed a little bit. Town of Clarence was always at 100, I don't say always, many, many, last so many years have been at 100%, and they dropped down to 92%. Naturally, Clarence drives the rate as it is basically 91% of the district. But it's good news that it came in significantly lower than we anticipated.
And just, maybe on that point, just, I guess, high-level comment for those that are obviously going to be getting tax bills shortly. Every municipality or the four taxing jurisdictions have different rates. Clarence drives it. While we're flat or thereabouts a year ago in total, those in Clarence are going to be slightly higher, but it's still less than what we projected at the budget time.
Correct.
Thank you.
Last item we have in this, the finance package, is our internal claims auditor. I did give you a little enhanced resume for this person, which we omitted it from this original packet. Nancy Tucheron was our retired district treasurer for 30 years, and when she retired, she took on the claims auditor position. She's now retiring from her retired position, and we were lucky to have a relationship with Stacy Stasak, and she is more than willing to take on the position. We had her in the office, working with Nancy and the district treasurer, to make sure that it was a good fit for both of us, and I would like to recommend that we appoint her for the district claims auditor.
Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Mancuso? Seeing none, could I get a motion to approve the finance items, F1 to F5?
Make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Curious. Thank you, Mr. Mancuso. Mr. Michelle, personnel.
This evening, we have three resignations for retirement purposes. Amy Arnold, Sheridan Hill kindergarten teacher, retires after 33 years of service. Jeannie Boyer, Sheridan Hill music teacher, retires after 20 years of service. And Jadeen Zvorny, Sheridan Hill art teacher, retires after 32 years of service. Thank you to Jadeen, Amy, and Jeannie for all of their service to our children. P2 has informational item of a teacher that is being reassigned to only one building from being a split position. In our appointments, we have six new teachers, three regular substitutes, one part-time reading teacher, two PE teachers that will teach health this year. They have been hired previously, but at their initial hire, they were not hired to teach health. They are both certified for those positions. We have our list of department chair and grade level positions for the upcoming year, both grade six orientation and freshman orientation, teachers that helped for that process, mentors for the upcoming year, and TCI training recommendations. P4 is the approval of additional hours for our guidance staff as we've been working through the scheduling process with our new hybrid model. P5 is summer curriculum project request from Mrs. Overhold. P6 is an extensive presentation compensation list. P7 recommends a group of teachers that serve on summer CSE meetings. P8 has our substitute teacher rates this year. We only changed the daily rate, increasing it by $10. P9 is our substitute teacher list. We currently have about 120 substitutes on our list to start the year. P10 is a resolution that identifies Dr. Hicks as the lead evaluator of building principals, and that all of the administrators are lead evaluators for teacher APPR process. We have an addendum. In the, in our addendum this evening, we also have an additional retirement. Jill Fitzgerald, who is our general music and orchestra teacher at the middle school, retires after 19 years of service. Having an addendum, we had the opportunity to add a few other items, such as one person to the new student screening, additional summer curriculum projects for Mrs. Overhold, and one deletion from the substitute teacher list.
Does anybody have any questions on personnel?
I just have one question, Mike. How do you determine, or how is it determined, who is department chair?
The department chair process is posted, then people would then apply for that position. We then send out correspondence to all the department members, that the principals receive feedback about those applicants, and then the principal makes a recommendation.
Thank you.
With regards to, and you may have missed this, but I may have, may have said this, but I may have missed it, the sub-rate that we're increasing, that is comparable to neighboring districts now?
Yes.
Okay. And then the sub-list that we're approving tonight, how does that compare to other years?
It's about the same starting point, and then we'll very soon post a position. It's an open sub-position that we have, and that's how we continually add to that each month.
And do we go through a process of those that are on the list every year to contact them to ensure that they still want to maintain?
Yes. We send reasonable assurance letters in June for those that want to return, and then because of COVID and some of the breakdown, we resent those, about another 80 out again a second time in the beginning of August to double-check that if people wanted to stay or not, because they had not returned those letters.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Any other questions?
Just the additional person to help with screening, is that to help look at online things that parents are doing, or?
No, new students to the district. So, new students screened as they came in this summer.
Got you. Thank you.
The teacher's a reading specialist. So, she was conducting reading screening. Intervention.
Before I entertain a motion, I want to echo your kind words and wish those retirees all our best for the years of service. You know, my daughter, well, both of them, but one in particular, had all four of these teachers over the years. And I can attest to their dedication. And they will be missed. With that, could I get a motion to approve P1 to P10?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Curious. Non-instructional?
Non-instructional. P11 amends previous board actions. It's just adjustment to hourly wages. Resignations. This evening, we have three retirements from non-instructional. Barb Berkmeier, who was a cleaner, retires after five years of service. Deborah Mattson, teacher aide, retires after 16 years of service. And Carl Miller, one of our auto mechanics, retires after 17 years of service. So, thank you to Carl, Deborah, and Barbara for their service to the district. We also have resignations from five other support staff. P13 increased the hours for a cleaner. P14 is one request for an unpaid leave of absence. P15 has our appointments. This evening, we have four full-time cleaners, 10 part-time cleaners, four teacher aides, two clerical positions, and one custodian. We then have the list of summer employees, as well as individuals completing the TCI training this year. P16 has informational items for transfers to a different building or a different title. P17 has the non-instructional substitute rates of pay. And P18 contains the multiple lists for substitutes of each of those areas.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions on non-instructional? I guess echoing the same question, the substitute rate of pay is commensurate with other districts as well?
The rates of pay for non-instructional staff is actually the base rate that is in the contract for a starting person.
Okay. Thank you.
Are the cleaner positions additional positions for this year's circumstances? Or are these just regular appointments?
No, there are additional cleaner positions, and all of those part-time. Many of those are all temporary positions where we're using bus drivers and other positions to help fill the need for cleaning.
Okay.
I guess, any other questions? So, I'd echo my prior comments. Wish all those retirees all the best on their service to the district over the years. We wish you all well. Could I get a motion to approve items P11 to P18?
Motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Curious. Thank you, Mr. Michelle.
Thank you, Mr. Fuchs.
Special needs and student activities, Dr. Hicks?
The Committee on Special Education report is probably the largest one of the year. It's really everything from May through the summer. And again, I just want to compliment Mary Jo Dunkle, Mary Ellen Colling. They created all of these CSE meetings remotely, for the most part, kept doing them over the summer. Everything's ready for the beginning of the school year because of that hard work. So, there's pages and pages in there of the CSE stuff. Then on the CPSE stuff, these are about the last 14 kids to get placed in the preschool summer, or preschool year-long program through the county.
I think, I don't recall you mentioning in your opening presentation, but in addition to the forums mentioned, you did have, I believe, two meetings with this?
Right. We did. We had two special education parent meetings. The last one was tonight. We probably had about 75 participants tonight, about 100 the last time. And we answered kind of exclusive special ed questions. We didn't videotape that particular meeting because there's a possibility that someone could watch that videotape and figure out that who a particular student is that the mom or dad is talking about. And we didn't want those privacy issues. So, we will post the Q&amp;A for special ed. It's already up on our website. But yes, we also did special ed parents.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions on special needs and student activities? Seeing none, could I get a motion to approve S1 and S2?
Make a motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Curious. Okay. Moving on to board development and policy items.
First item is an update on the code of conduct. We want to make sure that the code of conduct reflects some of the protocols and procedures for COVID. Rob, can you just give a general overview of what we're putting in for masks?
We put in that, generally speaking, that students will have to follow not only all the general safety procedures that are posted, those protocols that are outlined by administrators and teachers, but as well the mask-wearing guidelines. And although they would have fallen normally under insubordination, we wanted to make sure that it was clear.
So, we're serious about masks. It's the biggest deal for us in terms of bringing kids back, that and social distancing. We're going to make sure our kids have good understanding, and they will do the right thing. I'm convinced of it.
Anybody have any questions on the code of conduct?
Do they have to wear masks while they're playing sports?
Boy, we don't know that one yet, Tricia. So, we'll wait for the high school. I can't imagine how you could. But I don't know.
And that 72 hours is when?
Yeah.
We get some guidance.
Was your plan to address the types of masks that are acceptable and not under, would that just fall under wearing a mask as directed, in case there's changes in the recommendations throughout the year?
Right. It won't be within, specified within the code of conduct necessarily. But we'll have a letter going out later this week to parents that is very specific about acceptable and non-acceptable masks.
I just have two questions. One, you don't mention the bus in the code of conduct, that you have to have a mask. We just say common spaces. Should we include the bus? Or should that be included in G, which is below?
That's a good comment, Dawn. Let us think on that one and get back to you.
My question is, it's referenced also, and I think I mentioned this earlier, that the high school has the live conferencing guidelines, middle school and high school. And we haven't, like, what are they, how are they, what is it, and how does it relate to this comment?
Go ahead, Rob. The live conferencing guidelines are the experiences that we expect that students should be coming to the screen, prepared to work very similar as they would in the classroom. So, some of the things along the lines of dress, having extra people in the space, different things that we would maybe see as unacceptable conduct if they were in person, that expectation is for the remote as well.
So, we did many video conferencing opportunities during the last four months of the school year. A couple of times, some kids did some inappropriate things. So, that's in there just to make sure that they fit under the code of conduct when they incur the discipline.
That statement's very general. So, the, each building, based upon what is appropriate, age-appropriate, we'll put that into their student handbooks.
Thank you.
So, if a student wore a shirt that was inappropriate in school, it would also be inappropriate.
Right. Can't do that.
Yeah, we were recently having discussion about if a student is on a conference or a meeting with the teacher, and they vaped, you know, and how would we handle that as far as discipline goes? And would it be the same if they had done it in the classroom?
Right. So, we're considering when you're remote and you're logged in for your day, it's just like being in school. Outside your day, that's different.
Would you follow up with a suspension if a student was vaping? Like, they would be suspended from remote for the next day, or?
So, what we'll do is the same that we do for every infraction. We'll investigate and make an appropriate penalty based on the factors that were surrounding it, including prior conduct by the kid.
Thank you.
I don't want to say suspension automatically. There might be a circumstance where we wouldn't do that, or where we would do something more than that.
Does anybody have any other additional questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to approve item one, the code of conduct update. A second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Curious. Thank you, Dr. Hicks. All right. The next item under board development policy is the Board of Ed handbook, which we've had on various meetings over the last few months. Just for the benefit of those that may have looked at the pre-read online in the public packet, board members have two additional pages that are updates to what was online. And I'll just touch on them briefly. One after, on page one, welcome to new members. After that paragraph, there was some additional language that we had previously discussed the last time we actually had a virtual meeting, that Ms. Snyder had submitted and was not included. So, that is, that language is reflective there. And then on page nine, in addition to a spelling update, under open meeting law, there is an assertion beyond executive session to include the words, or the reference to an education and training session as well. So, other than that, I guess I'd open the floor to any discussion on the content, if anybody has any concerns with the document as submitted in the update, I'm sorry, in the pre-read, plus those two updates.
Just want to thank former member, Mad Stock, who did a lot of work on this, and really, we'd be thankful for that.
Anything additional? Donna, I thank you for identifying those few additions. Did you, you okay with those as written?
I am. Thank you.
If no one has any additional comments, we have it on the agenda for an action and approval tonight. So, I would open the floor to a motion to approve item two, the Board of Ed handbook, which is the pre-read amended for those two items mentioned.
Motion.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Curious. Thank you, everyone. So, the next item in board development is a discussion on Board of Ed goals for the 2021 school year. This is informational only tonight. I'll just make a couple of comments before I open it up to the floor. Typically, we adopt goals. We've been pretty linked and rolling our goals in line with the superintendent's goals, which we discussed with him as a matter of employee performance. That is both published on the website and transparent. But we have not necessarily debated content on our goals in public. So, this is an attempt to do so. What we have in the draft dated 8/22/20 that everyone has for consideration is really nothing more than what I took to be a starting point, based on discussions we've had in various forums as a group with the superintendent relative to priorities as we go into the 2021 school year. So, they're my words. I would welcome any wordsmithing, any additions, deletions, discussions. From my perspective, the only comment I'll make overarching is given the challenges ahead, what we're living through right now, and what we don't know will be coming ahead relative to fiscal challenges, as well as just resource challenges to accomplish all of the changes that we're implementing and be successful at doing so. I would caution us to not get too aggressive with the goals at this point in time to make sure that the district has clear line of sight to those priorities that are most important to us. So, with that, open it up for any comments, discussion?
I have just a quick comment. What I'd like to see added here, and not to lose focus on, is the mental health and social-emotional needs of our students. I think that needs to be a goal of its own.
I agree with that.
Going along with what you said with our needs this year, that's definitely in line?
I would concur with that as well. I know in years past, we've had the family support center as a called-out goal. We've had some broader goals. There is some reference to mental health in one of these items, but I would agree that we could call it out more directly.
I guess, Mike, I do have one other thing. I'd like to see us go back and look at the safety initiatives and see where we stand with meeting all of those. I would love to make that a goal, so we can get that done this year. And I know that our buildings and grounds are going to be tight with some of those things. I think we really do need to achieve this year.
So, really, making sure that those items that we as a board, in collaboration with the district, as a safety committee, we identified a list of items that were sent in motion to ensure that we have completed all those, not necessarily layer on to them at this point.
Correct. Plus, there's also ongoing initiatives with the safety committee that Mr. Mancuso heads. So, just to keep our eye on that as well. I think that's important, especially with our windows open and all the other things we're going to be dealing with.
Along those lines, you will be receiving updates to our safety plan at the next board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've already started to accomplish it.
Does anybody else have any additional comments? I know, Dr. Lynch, you had mentioned some concerns relative to the long-term planning multi-year with the fiscal challenges ahead. You know, item two under fiscal responsibility, develop a multi-year strategy for the use of fund balance to ensure existing programs are protected, considering reductions in funding sources. That was my attempt to wordsmith that item. I don't know if you're comfortable with that encapsulating. Okay.
Mike, is capital project, does that fall under us as a goal, or does it fall under Dr. Hicks?
So, previously, we've had the goal of getting it approved. And we've had the goal of monitoring progress. Where we're at, I guess, maybe Mr. Mancuso could just update on what we would expect to accomplish this year.
Sure. Thursday last week, I think that would have been the 9th, 20th, we submitted everything to New York State for the first half of the project. We anticipate a turnaround through the process, meeting our deadlines, so that we can bid this first half of the project in November, take bids to the Board of Education at the December meeting, January at the latest, and award them. And we could have, we'll be ready to break ground as soon as the weather breaks. We also have a unique opportunity this coming year to do some work in the middle school, which is one of the buildings that is the first half of the project, because of the Wednesdays not having students there. And if that holds through to the rest
Does anybody else have any additional items? I guess what I would suggest, with the objective of making sure our goals are officially adopted at the next meeting in September, that if you have any additional feedback before that time, you funnel it to myself, and I will incorporate. If it's a natural fit, if it looks like it might be an item that we're going to have to discuss, I will, you know, add it to the bottom. And we can do so at the last, at the next meeting with the intention of getting everything on here. The proposed measures on this document are a little loose at this point in time. They're intended to line up with expected deliverables, such as if we had the capital item, this board approving the project no later than January 2021, as an example. So, we can tighten those up once, seeing as there's been no appreciable changes to any of these language items thus far. So, what I've heard is we have the items on here. We, I think I've seen collective nodding of the heads on a mental health and an emotional health item to be added and called out explicitly on here. Capital project is probably worth noting. It is a big spend item that we need to monitor. And then the safety committee actually is going to be providing, we can have an update at next meeting as well. at next meeting as well. Does anybody have any additional thoughts or comments at this time? All right. Thank you. With that, we arrive at the second public comments session for this evening. If anybody has any comments, there's again, two microphones, if you would just state your name and address for the record.
Should I take this off? Siobhan Como, 6320 Utley Road, Akron. I have a comment and four questions. My first is just to thank everyone for the transparency that you have given parents throughout this process. Also, I've been very impressed with your communication with the teachers. I know a lot of districts have not had that, so I wanted to say thank you also for that. I know that's a big team we have going here that has to obviously involve the teachers, and I know some places haven't, so I wanted to thank you for that. My second question involved PPE. I've heard other districts who have now delayed starts because they do not have the PPE in stock that they needed, nor feel that they can keep it in stock, so I wondered where we were with our PPE deliveries.
Sure. We think we're, we're right on target. As I mentioned, the polycarbonate dividers were all delivered, and we will have them all installed in all the classrooms. We've ordered enough masks to have cloth masks for every student and every faculty member. We've got shields for those who want shields in addition to the masks. We have the surgical-type masks that you see here, that will be in every classroom. We have gloves in every class. We will have gloves in every classroom, and hand sanitizer in every classroom.
So we also, Siobhan, we also have those spiffy see-through masks and specialty ones for chorus, and the, a covering that you put around the bell of a wind instrument, so it gets covered.
Ah, yeah. I've heard about those. We actually have everything, then.
Just to clarify one item on the, the comment, we have gloves available. I know there's latex or vinyl. Some people have latex allergies. Do we have both, or we, do we go 100%?
For the gloves?
Yes.
Yes, we do. We have both.
Thank you.
My next question was, and I know you've responded, but it's kind of always been a kind of back-and-forth answer, but I know a lot of parents are wanting to know that when their children are home, if they will be live with the teacher, if they're remote, if, when they log in for the period, if they'll actually be watching a teacher teach every day, every period.
Yes. So again, in terms of the learning modalities, that will be aligned to the learning objectives. So when students log in, they would have an interaction with their teacher.
And they're watching what's being taught in class during that time?
They, they can be watching the teacher live. They can also log in. It could be a learning activity that they're participating in, but the expectation is when they log in, there is an interaction with, with the instructor.
Okay. Thank you.
So it, we don't want to give the wrong impression. It's not going to be livestreamed every day. So if the teacher has a lesson where the majority of the time is direct instruction, then it would make logical sense to stream that. If it's more guided practice, if it's more independent practice, it wouldn't make sense to stream that. So it's really contingent upon what the lesson is supposed to be about from a goal standpoint.
But there should be like a continuity of what they learn the day before and the next lesson. It'll kind of go back and forth with the kids at school.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So we want it to be meaningful and substantial, but it's not going to be perfect.
No, no. But I already can see the difference from last year, so I thank you for that also. Two more things. The middle school and high school, I know you're being spread out more for lunch. Will that be in their schedule where they're assigned? I know you're going to use places beyond the cafeteria.
Yeah. It may not be on their printed schedule that they get out of power school, but by the time the first four days are completed, they'll know where they're supposed to go for lunch.
Okay. Perfect. And my last question was just, I always read over your minutes for the evening, and I wondered why, and I may have asked this before. In the code of conduct, when you refer to student clothing, how it's never really must not wear these things, it's always like they should, I don't, I can't think how the wording was, but basically it was a lot of leniency, I thought, in what children could wear and not wear. Like, it didn't say they may not wear, you know, underwear and see-through tops, but you kind of advised that they not wear. I just wondered why it's not like more concrete in the way you word things.
Let me take a look at it and get back to you.
Okay.
I distinctly remember some things, like you can't show your belly button and stuff like that. I thought that was in there. Is it now?
I don't know. It just said when it, when it pertained to any kind of clothing that may or may not show things, it didn't say that they could not wear it. It was almost like they're advised not to.
Because there's a separate dress code. Remember that thing, Rob, the pamphlet that came out for the middle school and the high school? And I thought that did have yes, no kind of stuff on it, didn't it?
Yeah, the one that I, I just, when I read through the code of conduct tonight, like, I was reading it, it just seemed like it was not like saying they definitely couldn't. It was kind of more, wording was funny.
We may have done that on purpose because we spoke to some attorneys or something.
Well, that's what I figured, yes. I just was curious.
Usually the handbooks are very direct, and the class meetings are.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I hope so.
Some of the things that have to be addressed is having to do with the differences between kindergarten dressing and high school seniors. So that's why we take the code of conduct being general and be very specific in the handbook.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
Does anyone else have any additional comments at this time?
I just have one question. Do any of the kids get the masks, like, on the first day, or?
Yeah. So we've got a little bit of an issue that we're handing out the masks on the first day and expecting them to come to school with masks on, but we think we'll, in our letter to parents, we'll let them know that if they had to come and pick a mask up beforehand, we'll do that.
What, what is the platform you're actually like going to be streaming on? Is it Zoom, or is it like?
Right. It could be either Google Meet or Zoom.
Or Microsoft Teams. We have a third platform.
Thank you.
Because I know, like, today there was major issues in colleges because Zoom crashed, and none of them could.
Zoom afforded us some additional features that you can't get in Google Meet, or you can't get yet in Google Meet.
That's correct.
So, and one of them is this ability to do breakout groups, which was very intriguing to our teachers.
Absolutely.
A kind of way to do a virtual group learning. So we think that if we're within our domain, if we're within our own network here, within our own bubble, our own cloud, that those kind of issues aren't going to impact us. We increased the size of our internet pipe. We doubled it this year. So is that in this month's financials? I don't know, Rick, but the-
It was through BOSI, so you don't sit down.
So it's a BOSI's cost. We doubled it, so we essentially have two terabytes.
Yes.
Get, two, whatever the thing is called. Big monster pipe.
Are there still a lot of dead zones in the high school? Because like, you get that a lot.
Wireless dead zones?
What?
Wireless dead zones?
Yeah.
Yeah. There should, we took care of some of that this summer, and again, we have, our guys are ready to put some more antennas up if we need it. The biggest issue that we had last year was a bandwidth issue when everyone was trying to do everything at once. With doubling the size of the pipe, we shouldn't have a problem with that.
And even during the closure last year, we did ultimately conduct over 12,000 Google meetings on Google Meet. So, so teachers are very familiar with that platform as well.
Kristin, when are the resources going to be up for parents on Schoology?
They are currently up, so we do have a video library that parents can access on our district website under the curriculum department. There's an introduction to Schoology specifically for parents that is now available.
And have we told them that, if some, and any, and some of the correspondence?
That will go out with our parent communication, yes.
Thank you.
One of, I should have asked this earlier. I didn't think of it, either Jeff or Rick. Last week, the county executive announced that he's going to be giving $100 per student from the CARES Act. How would that be used?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I just got the contracts. It's $100 per student, plus an additional $50 for, for basically all the free and reduced students. So our allocation comes to $460,500. Now, those funds aren't grant-type funds, so they're not in addition to, they're meant to supplement costs that we already had to spend for PPE-type items. So one of the good things, the polycarbonate dividers that we just purchased falls right into line with that. So I think that's probably how our contract will read. But again, it's a $460,000 revenue source that we are going to get in a year where we anticipate, number one, lower sales tax and potential state aid cuts.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Just one other question about the masks. So I understand, and I, I'm thankful that we're distributing cloth masks to be, to be worn. Is the expectation that the students will wear that cloth mask every day? What, what hat, what's the process if they show up to school and they don't have their cloth mask? What is our stock of? I assume these are the backups?
Right. These are the backups. And again, they shouldn't really even get on the bus without a mask. But if, if a student does get on the bus without a mask, they'll be met by an administrator. We'll make sure that they have a mask that they can wear. We're going to give, we, we have enough for three cloth masks per kid. I don't think we're giving them all three at the beginning. Is that correct, Rick?
I think it makes sense to give them two to start with, and hold at least one aside.
Reusable, machine-washable cloth masks, and we'll have these things as backups. If they have their own, they can wear them, but they can't be on the non-approved list.
Will the buses have small supplies of masks to, so the students can be masked once they get on?
At one point, we were not allowed to put sanitizer on the buses. That has changed with some kind of ruling that came out, right, this week?
Correct. So we could have the sanitizer, and we will have a box of masks.
So we'll have both of those things on the bus as well.
Did the freshman orientation tours, did they start? How's that going?
They start tomorrow.
They start tomorrow?
Yes. And sixth grade orientation took place today.
Okay.
At the middle school, and it went very, very well.
Great.
I participated myself. I have a sixth grader. Well, I should say he participated.
Yeah. I saw the sessions for freshman orientation were very well done.
Yeah.
And I'm glad you included the kids escaping drugs on there, too. It was very good. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? The last item on the agenda and the items in our packet, just to note, the next currently regularly scheduled board meeting is September 21st, and that will be at the high school, either in this room or potentially the lecture hall, we'll clarify as it gets closer. Also noting that at the end of October, we have the New York State School Board's convention, which is now virtual. Six of us have currently registered for that event. And as previously mentioned by Dr. Hicks and Mrs. Overholt, we have conference days for teachers starting up next week. Tuesday is the first day for teacher attendance, the soft reopening week of September 8th to the 11th, and then we have a whole host of open houses, which are going to be scheduled virtually coming up in early to mid-September. Given that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Mike, can I just mention one thing?
Yes.
I got today from New York State School Board that on Wednesday, they're going to have a deeper dive into board policy webinar, that it's open to all board members, superintendents, and it's, it's free.
Great. Thank you. I'll check my-
Anybody has any interest, it's 12 to 1 on Wednesday, the 26th.
Thank you.
Mike, just one quick thing?
Yes.
UB is back today, and there's an anticipated influx in the number of positive cases as a result of that. Western New York was a little, or Erie County within Western New York was a little bit higher than the rest of the state over the past couple days. So I just want you to remember that the governor's numbers are still kicking in, and, you know, I didn't think there was any way by the time schools started that we would be there at 5%, but we were up a little bit, so we're keeping a really close eye on those metrics.
I forget the words he used today, but he put Western New York on notice, or Erie County.
It's a yellow flag, or caution flag. Yeah, sorry. Yellow flag.
So we're, we're well below the five, but it has been rising.
Right.
All righty. Can I get a motion to adjourn this evening?
Motion.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're all adjourned. Thank you.